Harry Adams, Brittany Brannan, Eric Shad Brannan.
Here.
David Gerhardt.
Here.
Mike Lafferty.
Here.
PD Henry.
Here.
Roy Roberts.
Here.
Don Willis.
Here.
Station, would you care to give an indication? Our authorities.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening so thankful for the day that you've given us, and we ask that you guide those in this room as they make decisions and discuss plans for this city, that they do their best and that they serve to the greatest capacity that they have. In your name we pray, amen.
All will please stand and welcome to place the flag when it says allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off, we need to take our visitors in case, let's see if you can join us. We'll miss you. First off, we like to give our visitors opportunity to speak. Do we have any visitors that would like to speak? Yes ma'am?
I had a letter in the mail from, you was gonna annexed Spratlin Branch.
Yes ma'am.
I was told that four years ago that you wouldn't annex it, and now you come up you're gonna annex it.
Told by whom?
I got a letter from you.
Four years ago that would have...
No, no, just recently.
Okay, yeah, just recently we sent a letter out.
Yeah.
Yes ma'am.
So are you going to annex it?
Well...
And if so, can you section it up? Cause you have some of there that don't wanna be annexed, and some that do.
Alright, let me give you, and I'm just gonna give you a thumbnail sketch, but if you'll come in Sarah Clark, she can give you some paperwork that explains exactly what you have to do.
Okay.
We do a first reading tonight. We don't do any discussion there. It basically just puts people on notice that we're looking to do them. In the second reading, which will be at the next meeting we have, that's when we'll actually open up the floor for discussion between the council, between us, and we'll discuss it at that point. Now, from sixty days from that point on, when we have our second reading, then y'all will have an opportunity to do a petition. The petition is from either two different people, either one landowners or registered voters. It can't be both, it has to be one or the other. And please share and tell me if I get this incorrect. And then at that point, the petition, we go into the process of the petition.
Okay, if they're registered voters, but they rent the apartment or house of their tenant, they sign?
It's my understanding that as long as they are registered voters, is that correct?
And this won't, it's not a process to not do an annexation, you're gonna ask the mayor to have it placed on the general election ballot. So then it'll be up to the registered voters to vote whether or not they want that to come in.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
So, that's a thumbnail sketch, but she can give you some information.
I'll just send the letter out to all property owners, so I'll put that information in there.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alright, no one else stepping up to speak. Approve of the bill?
Salute.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second, all in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Need to approve the minutes, excuse me, for 1/15/2018, so move. I have a motion, need a second?
Second.
I have a second, all in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Unfinished business, second reading and ordinance number 01-2018.
I get you. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Prestonburg, Kentucky, establishing a regular meeting time of the City Council to be the third Monday of each month at 6:00 PM.
Motion, I have a motion, need a second?
Second.
I have a second discussion. If there be no discussion, we need to roll call.
Harry Adams?
Yes.
Brittany Brannan?
Yes.
Shad Brannan?
Yes.
David Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mike Lafferty?
Yes.
PD Henry?
Yes.
Roy Roberts?
No.
And Don Willis?
Yes, somebody's changing that.
Did you write that motion wrong?
That's what Jay said, it's one is clarify that again.
They're legends.
Alright, new business. The first reading of ordinance number 02-2018.
An ordinance of the City of Prestonburg, Kentucky, by which the city establishes job classifications and compensation scales for elected officers, appointed officials, and employees for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
Being first reading, there will be no vote, no discussion. Now we need first reading of ordinance number 03-2018.
An ordinance declaring the City of Prestonburg's intent to annex territory of Spratlin Branch into the city.
Okay, being first reading of ordinance, there will be no discussion. Move on to number three, first reading of ordinance number 04-2018.
An ordinance declaring the City of Prestonburg's intent to annex territory of Lakeview Village subdivision into the city.
Again, being a first reading, now we'll go to open bids. These bids are for two cruisers that the police chief is trying to obtain. Let's see about vehicles first.
2018 Dodge Charger Police Package. Twenty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Who is that?
That is a Tim Short Auto Group.
Okay.
Freedom Dodge Chrysler Jeep.
Alright.
Two thousand and eighteen Dodge Charger Pursuit Rear-Wheel Drive. Twenty-one, let's see, after options. Okay, before options twenty-one thousand, one forty-five. After options twenty-two thousand, nine hundred.
Okay. Alright.
That's only two.
Chief Woods, that.
I didn't say, can I give him a put? Chief, here.
Chief, real quickly, and we've had some funding sources come up, and I know initially asked for two vehicles. I think when this chief and I talked about it, we were maybe looking at just buying one new vehicle right now. We'll be trying to purchase another one down the road. We're trying to get some four-wheel drives into our fleet, and we think if we wait a little while, that we may have some money to put into a four-wheel drive Jeep.
We talked about the four, yeah. We definitely need at least two or three more four-wheel drives because of bad weather. The only one we've got access to is the white Tahoe out there, and it's not equipped with emergency equipment or anything like that. It's just four-wheel drive. It's supposed to hook on the auction block there whenever we have a sales here for too much longer, but that Silver Rawls, the two-wheel drive pickup truck, and then the mayor's got the only four-wheel drive that we really get to quickly if we really needed one.
But, did you wanna buy, still buy two Dodges? You wanna buy one right now? Put that money towards Tahoe.
How long will it be before I get a chance to get a Tahoe?
With me and that? Why don't we go ahead and start the bidding process? And start the process, we'll have a solid base to work from. Well, we need to get a little closer to where the money is, because that's our whole problem, is the financing, the money. I don't wanna tie his money up. I understand, but we gotta, we gotta one or two of two. A bid's only good for so much time.
That's a hard decision, because I'd like to have two, but if I got a chance of getting a Dodge and a Tahoe for the next month or two, I'd go have a Dodge and a Tahoe. We actually need a Tahoe, because we've got an officer that's in accident reconstruction school right now, and already have one. And once we get to where we can get what's called a total station for fatal accidents and bad 1046s, which is accidents with injuries, now we're gonna need something that can hold all that equipment for them to work those accidents in, and the trunk of a Ford or whatever is just not big enough to hold all the equipment.
The total station is basically, it's a computer-generated scene.
Yes.
And if we have it, if we had our own total station, we could be able to get these railways cleared up forty-five minutes to an hour quicker.
Right now, we request assistance from the state police, and they've sort of changed policies on us a little bit to where they're not really wanting to come to our fail scenes, and Pikeville PD has often let us bother one of their total stations if we need be, which that would be the case right now. They're not cheap, but we're definitely gonna have to try to get a tame one sooner or later, and I'm waiting for the state police auction whenever they have one. They've got, I think, eight, mayor, they've got eight, they've got eight used total stations that we're gonna try to make, put in the bid on, make them work.
What's the big difference between them? Like, a want and a need, and if y'all...
What is a need?
If y'all need something, then I think, I mean, there you go, you know? I mean, I think we need to try to make it happen if we can.
Basically, the total station, no offense to you, Mr. Nunner, is for attorneys.
That's what I'm saying. Now, he didn't hear it, he didn't mean it.
If y'all, if y'all tell us...
Get it on our side.
If y'all tell us, if y'all tell us you need something, then I think we try to make it happen if we can, you know?
Well, you're looking at seventy-eight thousand dollars for the total station.
Twenty-two thousand.
I need you to make a motion.
What?
To what, to go with Tim Short?
I think motion to go with Tim Short.
You gotta have that motion to be able to buy, yeah, buy one or two.
I make a motion to buy one, and then go with the chairman of the county, next person. I think we're gonna move on very quickly on that.
You wanna see the financing first?
Three percent.
Well, US Bank, uh... Forty-five thousand dollars.
That's for two of them.
Yeah, that's for two of them.
Four point two percent, five years. One, First Conwell, two point five nine, for six months.
Okay. Yeah, that's...
Let's get four of them.
He says leave four.
We've got a motion on the car, now we need a motion on finance.
Make a motion on the...
I was at the...
First Conwell back.
I was in a meeting today about some financing options that we have. I will say that probably at the next meeting, we'll be, we'll be open bids for, for... I'd like to try and get them what they need. Well, the police department has done a wonderful job of staying under budget and spending their funding to do that. And he knows what we do daily, so he knows that most of the money we have, any extra money we have is earmarked, Union Center, fire station up Abbott, and some stuff like that. So, when he, we talked about it, he said, "I don't want to cut into our general fund." So, we've got some options, and I was in a meeting today where an option came up that I think we'll be able to fund a four-wheel drive sooner, more so than later, chief.
I hope so.
Is there an opportunity right for a grant since we will be needing to include it with that total station?
Well, right now, we've been approved for several grants, but the money's not there yet.
Waiting on federal government.
We've been approved for seven thousand dollar new radios for the cars and handheld and stuff.
Well, I got...
We're already approved, it's not there.
But there might be a way, though, to include with that total station, the need for that four-wheel drive, maybe curb some of the cost for attaining it. Oh, there will be, and just get the truck, just get the cruiser flat out, we can get a really, really, we get a whole lot of help with it, but again, we've already been approved for one grant, and we're sitting here waiting on it because we've got...
We've been waiting eight months.
How much did the, how much was our maintenance bill last week on the older vehicles?
Last month ever.
Last month.
Two thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents, just maintenance on the cars.
How many Fords you got left?
Eight.
So, we're...
We've only got five, two, four. We've only got five newer cars, the rest of them are Fords.
Then, basically... Well, I understand Chevy doesn't do the old Impala like they used to, those package.
They don't make police car audio.
Yeah, they don't make a police car.
They do make the four-wheel.
Four-wheel drive. Yeah, and then Ford makes a couple.
Yeah, Ford makes a few.
And the large, the LT series is the GM product, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Councilman Larkey bought four new Tahoe police packages.
Saw. That's how I can tell you, an exact number of many of them, as he can show you. Back in the day, they're well worth it.
Oh, yeah, that one that we have with K9 units, we haven't had a bit of problem out here.
Well, I could do much live PD, everybody's driving. I mean, I, you know... Well, they've changed, they've changed the engines to be like those Dodgers, aren't they, that where, when you're driving around town, they're not using the same, they're not using all eight cylinders, right?
Supposed to kick down the four.
Supposed to kick down the four cylinders, so it saves gas, too. Do I have a motion on the finance? You got a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Ah.
And, did we vote on the Cruiser? He made, Harry made a motion. We did vote, okay. Alright, let's move on to commission appointments. Harry, correct me if I'm wrong, but you guys elected Bill Greer?
Yes.
That's who y'all would like to have on the golf board. Of course, you know, he probably spends more time there than at home on the golf course, so...
He lives on the golf course.
He lives at the golf course. Alright, I would need a motion for someone to recommend Bill Greer.
Should I vote that motion?
I have a motion, need a second? All in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Alright, with Bill Greer going on the golf board, he will be leaving the ethics board, and with Councilman Brannan joining the city council, he also left, so the following meeting I'll have two spots to fill on the ethics board. I would love input from you guys as to who you think would be worth it, and who you think would be fair and amicable with Sharkpencil, be ready to work with us. So, we'll take that in. Approve the rate Smart 911. This is an operation issue, and really doesn't have to have an approval or a vote of any sort, but we wanna make you guys aware of what it is. I think Shad, Don, Brittany, and Mike were all here. It's an enhanced 911 system. It'll cost us, and I'm just gonna go ahead and cut right to it, it's the first thing people ask about it. It costs us a thousand dollars for the software to get it. It costs us eight thousand dollars a year for a maintenance plan, for updates, and for all the information that they will feed to us. The assets to it are unbelievable, and I'm just gonna use, I'll use Don as an example here.
Okay.
Don's gonna have, he's got two places he'll be. He'll be at the golf course, he'll be home, but he's got a cellphone, he don't use a home phone. So, as of right now, if someone calls us from a cellphone, there's not an address attached to it. If they go online and they fill out the information sheet, not only you would say that Don's either one of two places, this is where he lives, and this is where he works, that will be attached to his cellphone with the dial of 911, you could also have an opportunity for him to put information in it, such as he's, he's got high cholesterol, or he's this, or he's that, and it could have a complete listing of his medical information. And furthermore, if Don has had an opportunity to fight with police, or is a convicted felon, or he's been threatened police, that could also be...
Possible.
Yeah. But all this information can be added to it and can be put into this for each cop. It also works for landlines also. If they give a landline, let's say that somebody calls from their home, and it'll have a list of everybody who should be in that house, you can actually have a diagram of that house, come up on it at the same time. If the fire department goes there, they know that there's three or four houses, and Joe Blow was a tenant who lives in the basement, and you can make sure you get him. So, they're gonna know all this information going to the scene. Before they arrive on the scene, they're gonna know that the other person that's got diabetes in there. They're gonna know if there's a person that has heart problems or COPD. So, they're gonna be up to date on what's going on, as much as the people will fill out the information, it's their force. And now, to bring you to one of the big things, and it's right now, it's on everybody's lips and everybody's minds, we've been looking at this for about two months. We had, the last meeting was last Friday, we had a conference call, they did some video work on it, and the big thing that was really of interest, it's a panic button that will be placed in all the schools. This panic button will be placed in all schools, it will immediately, somebody's gonna have to sit there on a phone and discuss this with us. This panic button is, is emitting huge information into the radio room, who's immediately gonna be giving the information out. There's actually one case study that it had in there, in eight minutes, they had a student who had a gun before he ever got to be in it. So, just that, if it saves one life a year, because they know what's going on, because they're moving in, whatever, it's worth taking, the enhancement's well worth it. Now, to add to that, it also does geofencing, or something that, I don't understand a little lot, but if you make phone calls from inside that particular area, when it's fenced, when it's got this geofencing on it, it'll direct it to us, and it'll actually ping you on and tell them whether, if we have an active shooter or something. So, if we had a stu... Ms. Brickin, thank you for coming out today. If Ms. Brickin were in the, she's locked up in her classroom, she's got a couple in there, and she, she dials 911, and it will ping where she's at, so we know that's her phone, because she's filling out this information and tells us she works there, and it'll ping her in her office or whatever. Now, to add to that, we also have a situation where, alright, he's running up down the halls, the shooter is, or it's a domestic violence coll, or whatever the college is, if someone comes out and they dial 911 and they can't talk, through our consoles up there in the software room, they can immediately start a text conversation with them. They don't have to speak. They start texting at that point, back and forth. They can gain information without them having to speak. Even while the phone, while they're on the phone, they can immediately run over and start a text conversation with them. So, the assets to it are plenty, and I asked Ms. Brickin the other day, cause I discussed it with her, and then I discussed it with Steve Trimble, and I don't know if you got a chance to talk with Superintendent Trimble today?
No, I didn't, but again, this is another layer of safety, and the idea that, I mean, students use their telephones, they text. Students do not. It's a telephone, but they don't speak on these. Students text, and even as we saw it happen in Florida, students were texting the shooters in the hallway outside my room, and that's, that's what they do, and that's how they communicate. So, it's just, it's another layer of protection.
Now, to add to that, Chief Woods has contacted the principal of Stucke Valley, and the city of Prestonburg officers will be making random visits to all three schools in the city limits. Not to be looking for trouble, and they just wanna stop by and visit, hang out. I'm sure there might be a cup of coffee involved, maybe even a dog. But, Ms. Brickin, thank you for showing your support for this trouble here, but if there's any discussion now, I'm more than happy to. Shad, you and Don were there, did I miss anything that they need to know about?
Ma'am, you...
Yes.
Right now, let's say the radio room gets a 911 call from a cellphone. If you're unable to speak, or whatever, we don't know where you're at. With this system, the mayor's talking about, and they're registered online with us, we can go right to them. But right now, we've had at least two or three the last couple months, 911 hangups, that we didn't know where they were at, couldn't respond to them. So, this is, this is crazy.
Is there audio when they ring, and can you hear from the other side, like what's going on, or...
If they don't hang up.
Right.
But let's say they, they get disconnected somewhere, whatever, they will have the number and the location if they're in the radio room.
Right, okay.
Right now, we have... It's also increased safety for the emergency personnel.
Oh, yeah.
They're talking Friday. To have those notes available when you show up at a scene is just an extra tier of safety for all faster communication.
Response for personnel.
Well, when, if Ms. Brickin has the panic button in her office, and she hits that button, then at that point, she can start taking care of children. She don't have to sit there and say, "Well, he's wearing this, and this, and this, and this, and this." It's immediately gonna shoot out, we're gonna know what's going on. At that point, we're gonna start getting information from them. She could text it, she can have someone else text it or whatever. But they don't have to stand there with a phone in the secretary's office waiting, watching them come to the door. So, the level of safety that's gonna be there for everyone involved, I think is well worth the money, and I think the city should as well. And I feel like one percent like the city could, has to do this. I think, I think it's required for us to do this for safety purposes.
I agree.
Is this a lease purchase, or lease equipment?
No, there is no equipment. You buy the software, and then you pay an annual fee for updates, upkeep, maintenance, something goes wrong with it, to do that.
Seven thousand dollars a year.
And then they, they have a repository where the information is stored, that you don't have to buy extra servers and things like that for, so...
It's...
Seven thousand dollars a year. You got that thousand initial for the software, seven thousand dollars a year, if they're not in one.
And it's a shame that the whole county can't get something, don't get something like that.
It really is.
You know, we have to return, and we have to sign on for so long.
No, we just onboard.
I mean, we have to renew it once a year, so say we get into this, it's not what they promised, it's not the product we want, or there's something bad.
Oh, yeah, we can, you're talking about a out for us?
Yeah.
Yes, there is an out for us.
What's our, we all get to sign on for that promise?
We'll be obligated to one year at a time.
Chief, I know, I know with the city of Prestonburg, but what, would it involve from the whole county to get involved in that?
Nah, I don't know.
I mean, I mean... They would have to go through the county's 911, which goes through post.
It needs to happen, I mean, that's, you know, I know we can't make that decision, but...
That goes through, that would go through the state police post, and that's something that'd be made at the, at the county level. So, unless anybody has any discussions or negative comments toward it, I'm just, this is just an informational thing, let everybody know what's going on.
I have an idea.
And I'll be, I'll be signing up for it.
Come on. That's great.
Well, I'll be calling, and we'll be getting stuff.
I've gotta do it.
Okay. Next on agenda, number 11, Kentucky Ballet Theater donations. Last year, we donated twenty-five hundred dollars. They had almost two thousand students come to the Mount Rock Center for, I forgot what this was, it wasn't Nutcracker. Anyway, this year, it's the Little Mermaid. But, some new funding sources have been made available to them, so I think a thousand dollars is reasonable if we can get those kids into these, into this, and let them be trained, and let them understand. I do have that in my, in our donations. We wasn't thinking so many kids at one time, when we do our standard donation, but I see what this is, that will involve a lot of schools, and a lot of information, a lot, a lot of kids are gonna get opportunities they never get.
Do a motion.
I got a motion, yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Alright, do we have any other new business to discuss today, other than Brittany is gonna do a presentation on Kids' Day in the Park, is that what you're calling it?
Yes.
Okay.
It's supposed to be Trinity Shepherd from the State Park. It's a statewide thing, state parks are doing it. It's May 19th, Kids' Day in the Park. It's kind of like what they used to do at Archer Park, I guess, a while back. But it's just a big, kind of a bash, just for kids to get it out. We're gonna have Kentucky Fish and Wildlife there doing different presentations. We're gonna have different activities for the kids, just kind of get them outside. We're gonna have like magic shows and different things. I was talking to Mike, maybe have an ambulance over there. The fire department's gonna be over there with their trucks and police cars, and just wanna kind of let everyone know, let the community know, if any businesses would like to help out with, with the volunteering or donating tour, so we can get different activities. Just get pulled to me, and we'll be glad to have everyone get involved in it.
Have you contacted Eastern Kentucky Science Center yet?
Not yet.
Would you say it was?
May 19th.
Yep, I know about that. Any other new business? Usually, we have it on the schedule, but some things have come up we need to discuss. Under sixty-one point eight one of... Oh, check, forgot about them, they're sitting back there. We have James Williamson, Shawn Woods here. They actually hire our race board. Michael Ellis has helped them down the road, so, and the lease is coming up this March, is that correct?
April.
April? This April on the, on the racetrack. We've had it for three years. There's supposed to be a partnership. When Madison Banks went, the race has not been a partnership. There's also been a partner, supposed to be a partnership that's taking care of the properties down there. We've been taking care of the properties down there. So, Banks was decided they want to try the race, and we're more than happy to let them do it, if that's what they wanna do. Understanding that anything that's been purchased down there through the Prestonburg Racing Board is a loss to see you at Prestonburg. We have rights, we have a lot of stuff that will bump, a mowin' deck, is that, we got an option on a tractor that was part of it, and there's a lot of...
We own the mowin' deck, but we have an option on the tractor.
Yeah. So, it's all stuff that we utilize inside the city, and there's a reason I had them there. If anybody has any questions about the races or anything, please feel free to ask them. But I think at this point, and top of with Shawn and James, I'm sorry. But I think at this point, and top of the Shawn and, uh, James, uh, Huggy, I'm sorry. I've known you as Huggy most of his life, but, um, we feel as though we should give them an opportunity to, uh, to have their races if they want to, and, uh, we will, we will not, we'll let them be involved in, and they take care of it for a while. And no way is this being facetious, mean, smart-ock, anything like that, nobody think that, it's just, you know, we want to share, share a lot. You guys got anything to say, Shawn, Huggy?
Nope.
Okay, well, we'll need you two back in, uh, immediately in March, because it's right before the, uh, lease comes up, but I want to give everybody an opportunity to think about what's going on.
I think, March is about, about a copy. My rewind, I think it's first April, isn't it?
I believe so, I'll double check.
Uh, it's, it's end of March or April one, but, but our three-year contract was up, and, and I talked to Shawn here, and I don't know his feeling about it, but I think, you know, we've had it three years, so if they want it, uh, I think it's nothing but right to let them have it, you know.
The insurance is getting off expensive, too.
Well, that's the only thing, you know, I'm on the race board, or the airport board, too, so, you know, the understanding I got is, if they do race, they're required to have the two-million-dollar liability insurance that, that I bought. You know, for the cities, it protects your oil, protects the airport board as good as anybody else, so, as long as that's in place, I've got no problem with it.
Even though we won't be in the racing, we're still half-hundred and a half properties, and we'll do it in some liability.
Well, you gotta have the insurance, you know, for going down the property.
All right, any questions, Oliver? Under K R S sixty-one point eight one oh subsection one, subsection C, which is litigation. And sixty-one point eight one oh subsection one, subsection B, which is real estate. And, that's the only two we need. They caused, I need a motion to move in executive session. I have a motion, need a second. I have a second on favor. All opposed, if you guys will excuse us, we need to have a very quick, uh. Was there any motions come out of the executive session?
Yes, sir, I'll make a motion.
What, to cover up?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Sharon. I'll make a motion to, uh, allow the mayor to sign deeds to consummate, um, the transaction with Southern Water.
I have a second.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
Do we have another motion?
We have a second motion. I make the motion that we allow the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with the Commonwealth of Kentucky to take over the amphitheater in June.
I concur with that motion.
As long as she approves the lease, I can.
Well, I, I want, I want to amend that by saying that you all will have an opportunity to review it prior to me signing it along the way to get the seat there. Now, I got a motion?
I concur with that motion.
All right, I got a motion, need a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Mr. Russo, did you have anything to discuss tonight?
No, I'm good.
You sure?
Yep.
Anybody else have anything for Florida?
Got it.
I have a motion to adjourn, need a second, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.